I'd like to call this December meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome everyone, it's a good crowd for December. Lot of stuff to do tonight, so we'll try and move right along and I won't belabor the point anymore. If you'd all rise for the invocation, all about the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this wonderful day you've given us, Lord, we thank you for this wonderful life you've allowed us to live. God, we thank you once again for this beautiful county that you've given us and trusted us with, God. We thank you for all the people in this room who care so much about it. And Lord, we thank you for our intention to meet together, to serve together. It's in your name we pray.
Amen.
Mr. Williams? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain any adjustments to or approval of the agenda. I'd like to start, the county managers informed me that we're not quite ready to go on the Holly Springs Club agreement, and so we'd like to take that one off, that 16E, and then we'll do that at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, just because of time and personal request, could we postpone a couple of items until our next meeting? Those being items, 14A, the change of real estate measures, and 14B, the board format and term limited discussion, could we please postpone those to the next meeting?
I've got a statement, I want to make it along, number 14A.
Yes, sir. Any other changes before I take the motion?
Righteous clarification, you want to move those? Keep this meeting shorter or bring everybody more ready?
I'd just like to be here, because I'm more, just for the more than I done, I'm going to try to leave a little early, I gotta be in Raleigh at seven o'clock in the morning, so.
I'd just like to be here for those discussions.
One of the things with Chairman Andrew, the, this is the first meeting in December for the Board of County Commissioners, one of the things that's on the agenda that needs to be taken care of, is to see approval of our bonds for the last seven years, so it feels like they have that by the very election of Chairman Andrew.
Okay. 9/8, 14/10. Who's going to figure that out?
Yeah, I'll do that, it's basically something we do each year, require budget of that you when we do the bonds, finance sheriff and that's the only person.
I'd give a motion, a second to approve the agenda. Something? Second. I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda as adjusted. Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
All right, I think since December, correct, I'm wrong, we had made some statements with Mr. McQuillan being here by some term limits on working with some board, and we've had some discussions among us and what have you, and I know there's lots of problems that it would be replacing people on Sunday. There's one in particular, and that's a credit board, and I feel like makes term limits, and I don't want to bring this to a vote, I want to make some statements, trying to comply. We've got some good people out there that need an opportunity, has to say so on that board, and I have people asking me all the time about making decisions about going on. We've got something else, we're working on an application, I don't know if that's the problem, is it on the agenda?
No, if you could just copy of the agenda, just.
Okay.
So we'll push back to.
I would. But, I had intention of discussing this a little bit farther, and some did, Brian, but as we're bringing a new member on our board, we need to elect the chairman tonight, I've agreed to, let's look just down the road to January, and let's try to see if we can come up to a fair, I think we can talk after in our net, be fair to the people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion on the agenda, just? On favor of, the agenda is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to number five on your agenda, I'd like to read a letter from the Macon County Republican Party to the Macon County Board of Commissioners, subject recommendation to fill District One vacancy, dear Commissioners. December 1st, 2011, the Macon County Board of Commissioners consulted the Macon County Republican Party about filling the District One Commission seat vacancy. As consultation, it's bound to statutory requirement to do so prior to filling the vacancy. On December 5th, 2011, the Macon County Republican Party Executive Committee held a special meeting, and after thoughtful deliberation selected by unanimous vote James Tate of Highlands in District One as our recommendation to the Commission to fill the vacancy. While North Carolina general statute requires the Commission to accept such recommendation if submitted within thirty days of the vacancy, we pray that you will accept this recommendation without challenge. By way of introduction, I'd like to read the bio. James Jimmy Tate is resident of Highlands in District One and registered Republican meeting the statutory requirements to fill the seat. Mr. Tate is a sixth generation Maconian, is married with two children, has a bachelor of landscaping and architecture degree from the University of Georgia, and owns Tate Landscaping Services Incorporated. His work part-time is in EMT in Macon County for over fourteen years, and as a member of the EMS Quality Management Committee. Mr. Tate has served as vice chairman of the Macon County Republican Party, is a member of the Highlands Rotary Club, is lieutenant of the Highlands Fire and Rescue Department, though he has served for thirteen years. He chairs the Town of Highlands zoning board of adjustment, is on the Macon County Planning Board, and has served as past chairman of the Highlands Planning Board, the Appearance Commission, the Land Use Committee, is also a member of the Highlands Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Tate is also the current chairman of the Highlands Cashiers Land Trust Board of Directors and Stewardship Committee, and is a member of Highlands Methodist Church. Mr. Tate's work ethic, community service history, love of family, make him an excellent person to fill the District One vacancy and represent the citizens of District One as well as the citizens of Macon County. Sincerely yours, Chris Murray, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation to the Macon County Republican Party, glad to see, Jim Tate, as our next county manager.
Motion in second, all in favor? Any further discussion? I'd just like to say welcome.
And?
Any vote? Somebody on the front row said, I mean, I'll be too smart, but I can count.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you plant that appointment to the effective until first month.
First month, December of 2020.
Is that so amended? So amended, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You get an honest.
Well. Welcome, Jimmy. And now I'd like for Macon County Clerk Court Big Perry, I saw him in a room somewhere, to administer the oath to Mr. Tate.
Aye. James Phil Tate.
Aye, James Phil Tate. In solemn statement, I swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution. That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As county commissioner of Macon County.
As county commissioner of Macon County.
So don't be gone.
little bit. We are going to try to move quickly, Mr. Phil has a appointment in Raleigh, and he needs to get on the road to get down there, so without further ado, are there any other announcements?
Some of the things we're going to talk about in Raleigh, so you'll know, we do have a meeting in the morning, several different places. We still have some very concerns about the Secretary of Road program, where it's going to end up. As you all know, the 14 counties not going to be elected, fifty percent of the legislature. Those of us in rural counties have some real hard work, so we spoke to the speaker about this while he was in town, would like to have that more definitive answer from the speaker. The Secretary of Road program will be very expensive, the citizens of our county will be free.
So, just add to that, I make the speaker's note, last week, he assured me personally, and I'll say this publicly, that they said if there was any transfer of responsibility from Raleigh to the counties, that money would follow.
Right. And I've got some other issues on the board.
Okay.
You got to remember that, like I know his voters, he will, in his drive back, the word he's from Leckler County, he will pass through more counties, he will have more legislators from his county than the next seven counties he's going to drive through, so we want to make sure, so that's one of the meetings we have, we'll have another.
Appreciate it.
Any other announcements? All right, that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the proceedings over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. According to rules of procedure, the Board of County Commissioners set up the first one in December, each year the county manager makes all the meetings and presides, although the chairperson is elected, and the first order of business for the Board, the county manager presiding is to elect a chairperson from among his members. The second order of business of the Board, with the duty of electing the chairperson presiding is to select, elect a vice chairperson. And so, that being our rules of procedure, we'd like to open the Board for nominations for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Macon County for the next twelve months.
I would like to make a motion to the Board of Commissioners, Chairman, glad to see.
We have a motion and a second, all the other nominations. Here and now, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, will like aye. Please, aye is heaven's support. Congratulations.
Way to go. Surely, I'll be back in her. That's a good seat over there, that. Just for the record, I did not campaign for the job, but I appreciate the support of my fellow competitors, and I'll do my very best to serve the county's best ability, and their good power to Macon, Macon County and the local relia, all the people, so thank you for that. We need to select the vice chairman of the Board, and that vice chairman would serve in the capacity of the chairman in the absence of the chairman, and I'll open the floor now for nominations for a vice chairman of Macon County.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to put on for a motion, nominating Commissioner Bobby Coppers, as the vice chair, he's done a great job during the time transition, and so with that, I would nominate Commissioner Coppers as vice chair of the Lake County Board of Commissioners.
Say aye, next one. For the next one. We have a motion and a second for Bobby Coppers to assume the role, or to continue the role of the vice chairman of the Board. All the other nominations? All in favor, except for Mr. Coppers, signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Coppers, vice chairman. And let me get going, what Ronnie said, Bobby did an outstanding job chairing the Board in the past few weeks, and legislating some sort of difficult, Bobby appreciates you very much, and you too. We need to recognize the county manager now for, Jack Niedig, to talk about her doing her part.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm hereby as a common resolution, a resolution examination of the public officials of Macon County, where the pursuant law contract statutes fifty eight seventy six, the current office of the party, in accordance with the varying general statutes of legal position number one, the buyer's officer bond is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, according to statute one fifty nine, current surety is for the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company bond number, number four, in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The second position is for the tax administrator, and the current bond is also with the Ohio Casualty Company in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The third is for rest of deeds, the bond not less than ten thousand, not more than fifty thousand, is also with the Ohio Insurance Company, and is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And for the sheriff's bond, in the amount, but not less than, not more than twenty-five thousand dollars, currently the Ohio Casualty Company has that bond in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, whereas Macon County's officer of security, the Ohio Casualty Company Insurance Company, and you don't have the attached bonds with you, but those are what they are, then the Commissioners therefore resolve that the official bond for the public official to serve above, and the recommended balance for the Ohio Casualty Insurance Company, that hereby be approved, that's the recommendation. We need a motion to approve the surety bond for those individuals, sections of this.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Commissioner's issue? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion passes. We now have a public hearing on our land tonight, this public hearing is proposed as amendments to the telecommunications tower ordinance, and Chester, I guess we can call the hearing, so we'll call the hearing. And we do not have anyone signed up, Sheriff Paul, is that correct?
Correct.
Just speaking of hearings, so Chester, I'll turn it up.
Gentlemen, in conversation with the county manager, it has come to my attention that the county has been discussing possibility of leasing some property off the Hudson Bridge that the county owns to the state of North Carolina for the installation of a Viper Tower communication system. In the course of that discussion, we looked at our telecommunications tower ordinance that is in place here in North Carolina, and found out that it could possibly be construed to apply to towers constructed by the county and/or the state of North Carolina. Mr. Horton was of the opinion that he did not believe that we needed to have coverage of those two bodies under that ordinance, and indeed, the state of North Carolina threw the state highway parole, as well as the Attorney General's office, I believe, are both of the opinion that the ordinance would not be binding on the state in any way. But nevertheless, out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to make sure that our ordinance would provide or allow for the installation of this Viper Tower, which is critical to the health, safety, and welfare of the public here in Macon County, and it would enable the best communication possible for emergency purposes here in the county. So, with the orders from the county manager, put together a proposed amendment, I have prepared an amendment to Chapter 154, telecommunications tower section 154.04, applicability of treatment of violence. Whereas Macon County Board of Commissioners adopted the telecommunications tower ordinance of Macon County set forth in Chapter 154 of Code Ordnance of the County of Macon, North Carolina on May 5, 1998, and the same was amended on December 12, 2001, whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to make amendment to Section 154.04 of Chapter 154 of the telecommunications tower ordinance of Macon County amended as set forth for this. Whereas Board of Commissioners finds the same to be in the public interest and to promote the health, safety, and welfare pursuit authority vested in and by Carolina general statute section 138-121 of general statutes. Now therefore, being ordained by the Macon County Board of Commissioners by Section 154.04 of Chapter 154 of the telecommunications tower ordinance of Macon County as presented here, and hereby amended to add the following paragraph to the end of such section, which reads, quote, "Not contained anything to the contrary contained in this ordinance and Chapter 154 of Macon County Code, telecommunications towers which are, or are to be owned, used, leased, and/or constructed by Macon County, the state of North Carolina, and/or the United States of America, are specifically excluded from the coverage of this ordinance as codified in Chapter 154 of Macon County Code."
Any questions, clarification?
Opposed, you have a motion.
You will close the hearing. Any other comments before we close? The hearing closed, we have any comments from Commissioner or otherwise, or a motion to approve the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I may, if the Board is prepared to approve the amendment, the ordinance, I think we would like a process for our officials to be able to analyze the lease and the state construction of the communications tower.
It's actually a lease, a memorandum of lease, and a sublease arrangement whereby the county would be subleasing space on this Viper Tower, or its communication offices, and I have passed out each of those three documents in your piles of papers.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if we adopt the amendment to Chapter 154, telecommunications tower section 154.04, along with all of the leases described by our common attorney. That's a good motion, a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We've come to our public comment period, we do have three people, I believe, each chair is possibly here, we said we signed up for, and we do, I think, Mr. Chairman, we actually limit this to five minutes per person, I'll ask you a mere time to give if you would, please, sir. We first recognize Mr. Phil Clardy, and Phil talked about this already, I know this is on the agenda, but he wouldn't speak through it, so we're about to speak your public comment. Mr. Chairman, does, uh, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. I'm here representing the Tennessee Watershed Association tonight, and as Chairman has stated, I'm here to talk about something you may not be fully informed on yet, but you will be by the time the evening is over, referring to the Franklin and Fontana Local Watershed Plan, which is going to be presented later in this meeting by Andrea Leslie, Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, and I, along with a large number of other people from Macon County, had personally contributed to and commenting on that plan, and I would just like, on behalf of the Watershed Association, and also speaking personally as a product biologist who's business is watersheds, I'd like to endorse that plan. I think that all of us, county government and everyone else, is going to find it to be a very useful tool as we go forward, so I just want to reiterate my enthusiastic endorsement of the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Clardy. Next, we have Michelle Mosta, who is here to speak on the subject of wild water.
Hey, good. Last month, I came before your board and asked for your help in investigating my claim of tortuous interference with contract by a couple members of your planning board, which ultimately led to our buyer terminating their contract. You told me you would investigate this, and asked for my documentation. Not only did we provide my speech, but documentation from our buyers and the marketing company. On November 17, Elsie Jones and Ken Fromnick attended the planning board meeting in which Bobby Coppers was present. He stated that the Board of Commissioners had completed the investigation and found no wrongdoing. Commissioners' comments were followed immediately by the admission on the record by planning board member Al Slagel, admitting he had made such comments. He even identified our buyer by name. My documents presented to you had the name blacked out. Very interesting. Our attorney, Ken Fromnick, asked the county for the documentation on the investigation. On Friday, December 9, twenty-two days later, Mr. Decker sent an email stating, Ken, to my knowledge, there is, or was, no investigation, and therefore, there are no documents, notes, or recordings that I can provide. What is going on? Who's in charge here? I mean, your planning board member interfered with a contract. Do you realize how serious this is? Our buyers called the county to get their position on our development. Al Slagel spoke to our buyers as a county representative on all accounts, including stating, "We have issues with the developer." I stood before you last month, you turned to Derek and asked him if there were any issues with us. He stated, "They have done everything asked and are in compliance. We have no issues." In turn, you said, "The county's position is, 'We have no issues.'" Al Slagel purposely swayed our buyer for purchasing a lot, not based on what the county's position, but inputting his own agenda. Are you telling us and the citizens of Macon County that this is acceptable of a county official? Over the last couple of years, some of the members of the planning board have taken it upon themselves to push agendas of their own. All their comments are well documented. This is not what they were appointed for, is it? Also, do you know what your planning board did to us? About a week before the planning board meeting, five county officials from Macon County called the state licensing board to make sure our surveyor provided this statement on a plaque. Portions of this property are shown on a Macon County landslide hazard map. This is a fact. There is no Macon County landslide hazard map. One cannot find it on your website, or a copy to look at in any of your offices. The state does not have a landslide hazard map, and it is not on their website. Your mapping department has never seen this statement on a plaque. Other than properties including Diamond Falls, properties in Highlands, and other properties have transferred ownership, and this is not on any of their plaques. If this is the way the county does business, and then it needs to become a standard, this landslide hazard statement needs to be on everybody's plaque. You value our property at twenty million dollars, and you value the other property owners in Wildflower at another twenty million dollars. That's forty million dollars worth of real estate you expect taxes on, but look at what your members are doing. They're devaluing our property. About a week before the planning board meeting, five county officials from Macon County called the state licensing board to make sure our surveyor provided this statement on a plaque. Portions of this property are shown on a Macon County Landslide Hazard Map. This is a fact. There is no Macon County Landslide Hazard Map. One cannot find it on your website or a copy to look at in any of your offices. The state does not have a landslide hazard map, and it is not on their website. Your mapping department has never seen this statement on a plaque. Other than properties including Diamond Falls, properties in Highlands, and other properties have transferred ownership, and this is not on any of their plaques. If this is the way the county does business, and then it needs to become a standard, this landslide hazard statement needs to be on everybody's plaque. You value our property at twenty million dollars, and you value the other property owners in Wildflower at another twenty million dollars. That's forty million dollars worth of real estate you expect taxes on. But look at what your members are doing. They're devaluing our property. Unless they have material facts and not old studies and probabilities, they need to cease and desist commenting on Wildflower. Macon County is quickly becoming the anti-development county. Do you know that we sold a hundred lots in the last thirteen months in Macon County? Do you know we have thirteen houses going up? And we're putting money into the local economy and putting local people to work, but your members of the planning board are making it impossible to do business here. Do they not care about the people that they're supposed to represent? Our buyer told us, "I've never seen a county representative make these kinds of vicious allegations. It appears the planning and zoning board wants to make a spectacle of this." We would like this landslide hazard statement reversed, but our surveyor cannot do this due to the comments that the officials called the licensing board. Okay, well, I appear to you for a second time, asking for your help. And by the way, we have two more people that are wanting to get out of their contracts. I think we have a pattern here.
Thank you. You should don't respond directly to that, because I know you mentioned in the comments we talked to.
So, I'm not, not speaking right now to create an argument, but I would like to set the record straight. I was never tasked, nor did I ever claim to be asked by the chairman or the Board of Commissioners, nor did I state that at the planning board, that I was ever tasked by the Board of Commissioners. What I said was that a constituent had a complaint about the planning board, and as the liaison to the planning board, I looked into it. There are no notes, there are no, there is no official inquiry, there is nothing to turn over. If I had it, I would give you a chunk of my brain that you could have that would give you what you want. But I looked at your documents, I looked at some response documents, and as I said at the planning board, and I reiterate it again tonight, I am not taking sides here. I said those exact words at the planning board, and those that were here will remember me saying, "I am not taking sides." I did not take sides that night. What I said was, regardless of who may talk to whom, if that's proper English, Bonnie, and I don't know, the only official answer and the only official position of the county of Macon comes from a vote by the planning board, which has approved both your preliminary and final plaques, I believe, as, as embodied by the county planner or the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And that is what I said. Now, if that's wrong, then I'm wrong, and I'm happy to say that I'm wrong. But let's don't, let's don't brush these gentlemen up here who, all I did, ma'am, was look into a situation between the planning board and one of my constituents. I would do that for anybody sitting in this room where they'd pick up the phone and call me. I don't feel like I need, as the planning board liaison asked from the county commissioners to look into. Now, as far as, that is not, I, I didn't tell you anything on that, on that night. What I said was, I looked into it. I did not say I investigated, called witnesses, was asked by the board. That's the only thing I want to straightforward, and I'm not here to argue with you. This is public comment, and, and although you weren't there when I made the comments that I'm being accused now of making, what I did say was, you have every right to step up to that podium, and believe me, there was a lot of people who thought it was a little bit harsh, okay? But I said, "No." I said, "You have every right to step to that platform and speak your mind," and you do. And if I'm asked a question or if a planning board member is asked a question, they have the right to speak their mind as long as the understanding is, and that's what I made the comment for, it's the only reason I commented at the planning board, that no one speaks for Macon County except the county planner or the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I don't want to have any more arguments, Chairman, I'll shut up. I, that, but I, that's, that's the, that's what was said, okay? And I said it, and I stand by it.
Your, your planning commission has a fiduciary responsibility. They cannot input their own agenda.
And I agree with you, and I'm not here to debate that with you, ma'am.
They did not disclose to our buyer that they are inputting their own agenda. They said, "We," meaning the county.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not here to debate that with you.
They're making you liable.
I have said, I have set the record straight, and I'm done.
Okay, we, I think we need to move on. Michelle, I, I would suggest that if we need to talk about this further, probably this is not the, the public comment, it's not the time, I'd be glad to set a meeting, maybe between you and our attorney and Bobby if necessary, and we can discuss it. Fair enough. Chair, I'm the chair. All right, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate the time. And then, uh, we have Mr. Paul Carlson, and, uh, Paul is here to support, uh, Franklin de Fontana, damn sorry, Paul, you're crying, it's not mine, it's her.
Well, thank you. I don't have to say anything. I am Paul Carlson, Director of Land Trust of Tennessee. I want to welcome Commissioner Tate, and I can serve on the board of Sister Land Trust, probably having a county commission. Um, and Bill Clardy already covered this, but set the stage for Andrea Leslie's presentation just a little bit, but the land trust also participated in the Franklin de Fontana planning process, and just wanted to endorse this plan. North Macon, the water quality, rural landscape's one of the great assets, this plan, which is, that's all, I'm very much.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate the time. I think that was all for our public comment period. Uh, I'm thirteen, we have the reports and presentations, we have our audit report for fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and, uh, we have up in here, the Department of Martin-Starrs and Associates, as we just were then, welcome here. I believe it's Evelyn Sutter, who spent some time working in this department, welcome everyone.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Erica Brown from Martin-Starrs and Associates, and I'm here to present to you the two thousand eleven, uh, annual financial report, just to highlight of the audited financial statements. I believe you've received those financial statements, um, that have been approved and accepted by the local government commission. Um, I also wanted to thank you, uh, to, for allowing us to continue as your auditors, we've been your auditors for many years, and I just wanted to make note that we don't take that relationship lightly, and we appreciate that business. Um, we had an unqualified opinion on your audited financial statement, and in layman's terms, that is a clear opinion. That means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe that the financial statements could be misleading to the reader. Um, we had no findings or question costs, and no material internal, internal control weaknesses, and, uh, those are related to your federal and state awards. Um, we had collaborative staff in the finance department, I always like to thank the finance department, Evelyn and her staff, and, um, for being well prepared for aspects, and that's why I don't have it. I also wanted to mention that this presentation is mainly related to just the general fund. We will talk briefly about this. The audit process, there's, sometimes there's a misconception that the audit is a once-a-year thing, we come in, we're out, and, and that's about it, so I'm just here to explain that a little bit. The audit is a year-round process, we are always planning and looking at our risk assessment for things that are going on in the county. We come out in, um, in the spring for interim procedures, and this is when we look at your federal and state grants, and we look at our control controls. Then we come out, um, about September, and this is where we do our, form our final field work, and this is where we're producing and getting the numbers to, for the financial statements. We'll move into talking about the general fund. Excuse me, this slide shows us the revenues and expenditures for two thousand ten compared to two thousand eleven. Our revenues increased about two percent from prior year, and the expenditures decreased about one percent from the prior year. And in the upcoming slides, we'll look at this and what you do. Fund balance, the terminology of fund balance has changed a little bit, there was, um, an accounting standard CASB fifty-four that came out that was effective for this time period, and this changes the terminology for classifications of fund balance. Um, so terminology that you were used to has changed a little bit. Strictly terminology, I just wanted to explain that to you. Your fund balance is still your assets plus your liabilities, it's the classifications that have changed. Non-spendable fund balance, that is items that are not in cash form, such as prepaid and inventory. Your restricted fund balance is restricted from outside sources, such as laws and grants. And you have committed fund balance, of which there's none in the, um, audit report for this year, but committed fund balance would be internal constraint at the highest level, which would be at the board level, and they do not expire or require, require board action to undo. Assigned fund balance is one step below that, and that is also an internal constraint by the board, um, that is lower level than committed. And what is left over is your unassigned fund balance, that has no external or internal constraint.
Is that what we used to call it, Mr. Carlson?
Yes. Available fund balance, available fund balance is defined by the local government commission, and this is the calculation that they use as a basis for comparing, um, units and calculating your fund balance percentage. And they take your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, which again is prepaid and inventories, less stabilization by state statute, which is a state law, and basically what that is, is your receivables, and that's how they come up with their available fund balance. So your available fund balance percentage that the local government commission looks at may be different than what the board looks at, because a lot of times boards take out all restrictions, whereas the local government just takes out the state statute. This shows the fund balance position of the general fund. We have total fund balance of nineteen million, less our non-spendable, which was prepaid and inventory, less stabilization by state statute, which gives us available fund balance of sixteen point seven million. We compare that to the prior year, we had fourteen point three million in available fund balance, so that was an increase of two point four. The main reason for this increase, uh, is partly because of the overall increase in fund balance, and the other reason is because we had a decrease in state statutes.
And we did, we did allocate almost a million dollars out of, out of fund balance to, to Virgin.
Yes.
And so that's, that's with that, we mean it's it.
And I think you'll see that a little bit on this slide.
Yes, she'll see that a little bit later on in her presentation.
Um, this slide shows us our total fund balance for the general fund compared in the past three years. And here you see we've increased about one point five million, um, see about one point three million of that has already been appropriated in two thousand twelve, and then five hundred thousand of that was for contracts that were budgeted in two thousand eleven and not completed. Um, the other reason for this increase, we had a decrease in revenues, we also had a decrease in expenditures. Um, we had about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in property tax than we originally had budgeted for, and then our expenses were across multiple departments, but the main departments that the expenditures decreased were for social services and health department. We also looked at the revenue side, though, they didn't get some revenues that they had expected to get. Available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out for general fund, this is the available fund balance number that we looked at a few slides back that the local government commission looked at. Um, there was an overall increase of six point five percent in available fund balance, and I wanted to note that this doesn't include transfers out. The, the local government commission quite recommends a minimum of eight percent, and they consider that to be one month's worth of fund balance. So you have a little bit more than five months of the fund balance available. Um, and in the prior years, we showed this slide, this was unreserved fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, that, that terminology.
Just make sure the plan stands for fund balance, we have two thousand seven fund balance based on the year five, oh, ten, eleven election year. It doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration what new budget is for this year.
Yes, this is as of June thirty, two thousand eleven. I'll talk a little bit about the revenues and expenditures of the general fund. Um, this chart shows us your top three revenues in the general fund, being your abhorrent taxes, your restricted intergovernmental, and your local option. Those top three revenues comprise of eighty-nine percent of the revenues of the county. Here we see our abhorrent taxes compared to prior year, they've increased about one point seven million, or seven percent, and that was a change in the tax rate from twenty-six point four percent to twenty-seven point nine. Tax collection rates, um, I was looking at this slide, and I think it's a little skewed, it, it, it looks bad, but it's not, um, it's because the, the graph there has a, um, large, but the tax collection rates over the past few years, they have decreased, however, they've only been slight decreases, and citizens are continuing to pay their taxes, and a lot of this is due to the, to the climate economy, so we have seen this across the state, this is not unusual. And if you look, we, it only decreased from ninety-six point eight to ninety-six point Restricted intergovernmental, this shows our restricted intergovernmental revenues, and they decreased from the prior year about four percent, and these revenues are your grants from the federal and state government. Um, we had a decrease in foster care, WIC, and Medicaid transportation funding, we also had ERA funding that was decreased, um, however, the expenditures decreased in relation to these grants. Local option sales tax, sales tax decreased about six percent from the prior year, and again, this is due to the economy, and we have seen this across the state. If we move on to talk about our expenditures, um, our top three expenditures are public safety, human service, and education, and those total about thirty-five million dollars. We'll put this in detail. Um, our general government expenditures decreased about six percent, and this was mainly due to budget cuts, uh, related to the company. Public safety expenditures, these increased slightly, about one and a half percent from the prior year. And human services expenditures, these decreased about five percent, and again, this was mainly due to a decrease in funding from the state, so we had less revenues, less expenditures. Education expenditures, uh, your education expenditures decreased about fifteen percent from the prior year. I wanted to note, this is strictly just in the general fund. We see capital projects for school construction on another slide. Um, there was less projects in the current year compared to the prior year, and the prior year, I believe there was a Highland School project that was completed in two thousand ten, and there was also a disbursement of five hundred thousand dollars for capital outlay in the prior year, and there was no capital outlay dispersment in the current year in the general fund. This slide shows us our education expenditures, capital project funds, which is just for capital projects, um, that decreased about two and a half million, which was twenty-seven percent. Some of these projects were near or at completion as of end of two thousand ten, so for the current year, largest expenditures, um, that occurred, um, were the Ialta Valley K-5 project, which was about three and a half million, then we had, um, projects for the Manahella renovations and Franklin High School, which were about one point five million and one point three million. There was also debt issued in the current year, in the past, twelve point nine million. Debt service expenditures, this shows us what our debt service was for two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, um, and shows us our revenues related to it. Debt service, principal and interest payments, um, and expense, and expenses increased about seventeen percent than the prior year. Public school, in the current year, principal debt was about eighty percent of the total principal payments that were paid. There were some paid for the Highland Gym, we had a COPS issue, two thousand four COPS issue, East Franklin School, um, Standard Owen Property, there was other East Franklin School, Cusa, and Ialta Valley Elementary. That's a lot of information in the financial statement, so you can see some more detail related to the debt for education and for all your other debt service.
Now, South Macon or Old Macon?
No, it was included in the refinancing in two thousand four.
Yes, uh, he would be under.
That's part of the COPS, is that correct?
That's part of the COPS, which is included.
Okay, that's when you go with the interest rate, a lot.
Right.
We renegotiate it, so.
Yeah.
From South Macon and North Macon?
No, not North.
We just did South Macon, not Cartagej?
Cartagej, yes.
Cartagej.
Cartagej.
So there are both of them in there?
Yes, yes.
That was a one point two million, correct?
Yeah, there's about seventy-five percent of the COPS issue, of that COPS debt, the original debt that was for schools. So the lion's share of the debt payment on that COPS issue in two thousand four was for schools. It was a combination of several projects that were refinanced.
And the interest rate on that? And the interest rate on land is what?
I don't remember that, I'm sorry.
Three, yeah, three, maybe three, I don't know.
Well, I'll find it.
We want to talk a little bit about the solid waste fund. This slide shows us our cash, our GAAP net income and our cash basis net income. There was a slight increase in the prior year. Our cash basis net income increased about ninety percent in the prior year, and this was due to an increase of landfill and tipping fees. And there was also an increase in recycling revenue of forty-six percent in the prior year. This slide shows us our required debt service, cash flow from operations, and our unrestricted net assets of the solid waste fund. Our cash flows from operations increased due to an increase in other operating revenues and a decrease in cash paid for goods and services, which was our expenses. We had a twenty-three percent increase in unrestricted net assets. And this unrestricted net asset is your working capital, so this is your fund balance of the solid waste fund. And that was a brief overview of a big financial statement. I'd just like to look at the management discussion and analysis, which is the front part of the financial statements. That's a good place to look for comparisons above it, comparisons to the current year, and also what we're looking for.
The solid waste, well, the last slide you took, that's not included in the fund designated or we call it something else?
Correct, that's correct. Yes, unassigned, that is not included. It's a business-type fund, so it's separate from...
Of course, it is assigned, it's got its own...
Right, right.
Brad, do you have a copy of the PowerPoint?
I do not, but I can get some to you.
Or do you mail us the PowerPoint? You can just email us.
Do that, okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you have any questions, I know I kind of breeze over it, and it's a lot of information.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. This is another example of a very, very good finance department that we have and continue to have. A relationship with everyone down the leadership with Laurie, and I think you've got your head. Obviously, you've got your head.
Toughing up a year where we signed our way to a fund balance balance, but we actually lowered expenditures for the year that we're in now. I think this guy did great, and Harper did too. Everybody's cut back and done their job to keep expenses low that shows up here.
How many counties do you do?
Around thirty right now.
Can you see any counties with five million, thirty million?
Uh, we see some, and that's a question that's kind of hard to answer, because I just got that question last night. Well, the question I normally get is how do we compare to our neighboring counties, or how do we compare? I hate to give the political answer, but really what I can say is it depends on your goals of the board. Some places you could see a low fund balance, and that could be because they just finished a huge project and two years ago they had a really high fund balance. So it's kind of hard to speak to. But I would say as long as your fund balance is where the board has decided that it should be, and that you're planning for a future project, it would be higher, and you just...
I'm sure Emily's told you that, or Laurie's told you that. Many years ago, another board decided that it's going to be eight percent. And making County County never brought more than twenty-five percent. This board recognized that each year, but I think that's still... Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronnie, if you look on page fifty-one and fifty-two, all the debts in general fund are listed there with the terms and the interest rate.
Inside the second row?
The big one here.
Second row.
So Emily is that the three point six nine?
Now, the COPS is the second one. The COPS that we were talking about, which is a refinancing of original debt that we had. That is the second one listed there on page fifty-one, and the interest rate ranges from two point two five to five percent per annually. Because it's a COPS, that rate is not the same every year. It's higher in the beginning years, and then it drops down as the years go by.
Got it.
Any other questions of Erica?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, is we all, we always press through well. We're without, we might not have asked about us, definitely did a job after you get back. She's returning all this, but Laurie, you know, for all the circumstances, I'm sure, I'm sure, keep that in mind. And if you look around, on the current counties, but if you look around, probably in Kansas, North Carolina, and all the state and the national level, you see how the management of your budgeting does a good job in many cases. But when you roll your fund balance up to eight and a half, it increases, by the way. We increased our bond rate, uh, eight plus. So we're about to trend, this nationally, what's going on here, making, I think, the leadership on board. And it's a good staff, the finance department, and certainly our ads home to our partners, who do a good job for us. So we appreciate that, and it was for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, under whole business, we just made a genuine, uh, A and Z. So let's take a look at the C, recognize the A and Z. For services, about the making head work first, collecting, collecting.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. I come before you again about elected county friend for the next study, lying in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. You did a pledge of plan in September, we submitted that to the state revision, and it was reviewed, and sent back to us, registered letter on November sixteenth, that we need to have some honor revision, and resubmit, get your approval, and resubmit by January third, which you just told your local commissioners, maybe. So we did make our revision submitted, November twenty, I think, in the final approval. Those changes that we made, there's a list attached to your agenda, there's those substantive changes in policy procedures. Whilst the goals dissolve around revisions and certifications, we can have one type of that, there was an article in the last page, point. So you can go detailed, you do have all this, but it is nothing that changes our philosophies, our policies, procedures. We did submit those changes also to the welfare reform committee, which the members have unanimously supported us back via email, which naturally would have been a little bit, so... Do you want me to go through the whole video?
No, I don't think so. And that does cover the unanimous recommendation from back there, which I'm a part of that board, as you said today.
Just to remind this board that Macon County is one of the few elected counties in LA. And they did come under attack this year. And we're glad, and of course I'm happy to get the DSS direct to the year, importantly. But that was certainly one of the things that the state, on the state level, we certainly took up. This board did take our Macon County status, and they take it again. And that is kind of our main promotion that we adopt, the work for selected family by changes.
We have a motion in the second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for the sake of, if Bernie members who may not be familiar with the elected county status, I'm kind of not oversimplifying, but several years ago, the state decided that Macon County is on a local level, to do a better job, set priorities, and spend the money and so forth, and make it more efficient. Macon County is one of the counties that corrected to do that, and improved under a good leadership. And our department, which is set up with counties, not all the counties in the state have done it. And some of them want to revert back to the old system of bureaucracy, instead of taking local county building responsibility. And Macon just fell down and dumped a great job under Jane's leadership. So we're looking for responsibility, role of some of the expenditures in the Macon County's do. This is called safe measures for the state, and I can understand why they will not encourage our county to do the same thing as we've done here.
I told you that after being involved in this year in that board, that I think Macon County should be a model for the rest of the state to use. It's all about responsibility and accountability. And I believe, which we're on seven, is that right?
Exactly right.
Seven, yeah.
And our attorney, Mr. Jones, concerned me late back a few years ago, when he came under attack from a county household income. And she's done so well representing some of that. And I still think that that is still one of the, it should be available, whether for all of the state. I mean, if you live in a household, then you should contribute to county, to whole household income. As far as we know, in only counties that do that...
And just to clarify, that's probably, if someone's living in your house and you're not married, then...
That's right.
They're in camps, and that has upset some people, and I know that is...
Well, it's right, and we just, and I'm like, we said, Jane and I said, we're in a family together. And we tried, and we just sugar it, and we need this license, of course, working on that. So anyway, we're glad we're still there?
We can really hear that, so if you're saying it, you know the time. Job position.
We've not got yet any other discussion. All the favors signify the saying, ah?
Ah.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Thank you, he's a wonderful guy. Appreciate you much. Under, that was all under whole business. Under U business, we had Franklin Fund, had a local watershed plan, with Audrey Leslie, with the local park and environmental, and then resources.
Thank you for having me tonight. I try to keep a nice word for that, so that Mr. Deal can head on the roll. Is it privileged to talk to you tonight? I've been involved in a three-year effort called the Franklin, Montana, local watershed plan. And I'm just going to give you a quick summary as to what we were up to. This effort had a goal. My goal is to develop a watershed plan that will restore and protect stream health while addressing local concerns. So make it relevant to local staff, the local community, and make it useful to an ever-changing future. I work as a biologist for the North Carolina Department of Department Natural Resources. I work for a program called the Ecosystem and Climate Program. We're a non-municipal program. And we basically build stream and wetland protection projects to offset mitigation to North Carolina waters. And there, we do this through stream and wetland restoration projects and protection projects. Clear, in Macon County, there are a couple that you may be aware of. There's a big stream restoration project on Cat Creek, it's about a mile long. And that is, that's been in place for a couple of years, and the streamside vegetation is growing up nicely. And we were a partner in protecting the need more catfish. Okay, so the way we do this kind of work, what I do is I'm a watershed planner. And I try to focus in on certain areas that are priority areas across the state, to try to understand the health of stream resources, the health of rivers and streams in those areas, and identify the key problems for those streams and rivers, and try to address those issues through a plan. You can see in this map, there are a number of different blue and white and green watches. They're all local watershed planning areas. So Franklin, Montana is one of over thirty across the state. Here's the watershed, it's about a hundred and fifty square miles. It starts in the Cat Creek, Rabbit Creek area, just that heads into Lake Emery. Goes from Lake Emery all the way downstream, down Little Tennessee River to Lake Montana. So it's all the land and the rivers that drains the Little Tennessee River between Franklin and Lake Montana. Why do we focus here? We focused here because there is such an amazingly rich diversity in the water resource here. It's really, really exciting, there's a lot of support to try to conserve and restore these communities. And also a really thriving, has a very thriving and important cultural scene as well. Of course, this is the jewel, this is what a lot of people really value here, Little Tennessee River itself, which is a habitat that hosts a lot of rare, threatened, endangered species, as well as really important, really important locally for recreation. I didn't do this alone. I worked with a local advisory committee of more than twenty-five members. Some of your staff were involved, including sole water conservation district staff. Matt Mason was involved for your, the sedimentation erosion control group. Cooperative Extension was involved, local university staff, land trust staff. There are a whole bunch of people who are talented in natural resource and planning issues. Now, these folks helped us develop our assessment objectives and develop the planning recommendations that I'll be talking to you about. They also were key in doing some of the study work themselves. So we spent a couple of years studying streams and river, and Little Tennessee River in this watershed. Our goal was to determine how healthy these streams were. We were lucky in that you got a lot of information already through really strong bio-monitoring programs made up by Little Tennessee Watershed Association. We supplemented that work by looking at more streams, looking at habitat, at fish, aquatic invertebrates, and water quality pollutants. So our goal was to try to figure out how healthy streams were, what the problems were, what pollution issues there were, and why they were polluted. Here's a map of general ecological conditions across the watershed. And so this is, all of those data boiled down to try to look at overall integrity of stream systems. And you can see it's mapped by green, yellow, and red. The green areas are those areas where streams are really doing very well. So a small portion of Swain County, which includes Sawmill and Litlog Creek, as well as Cowie, Burning Count, those areas are generally doing very well. The yellow areas are moderately impacted, and then the red areas are very impacted. And those include the area outside of Franklin, Cat and Rabbit Creek, and part of Iowa, the Iowa watershed.
Before you build that, you use land flat?
Why? Well, we looked at, the things that were driving this were, we looked at fish and aquatic invertebrate communities, which are really great gauges of long-term water quality. We looked at a measure of overall water pollution, which is specific conductance. We looked at return and buffer condition and forest cover, and we kind of brought all of those, that information together to come up with this. So in general, those green areas were those areas where stream biological communities were functioning really well. And that was oftentimes associated with a lot of forest cover, with healthy buffers.
What is the next one?
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to address this all down to a couple of things I want to talk to you about. We summarized the key stressors that are pushing the streams and Little Tennessee River over the edge, not doing so well, in those red and yellow areas especially, to eight stressors or problems. And they're listed here, and that's detailed in this five-page summary that you all have. This summary, by the way, is a summary of a plan that's about a hundred pages long. The website that you can access to look at the entire plan is in this. Eric also has a copy of this plan, and I can make it available to you if you'd like a hard copy. But I'm going to focus today on three projects. One is lack of woody streamside vegetation. One is lack of woody streamside vegetation or riparian vegetation. The second is excess sediment inputs. And the third is stormwater runoff. So that we can safely go on. Okay, lack of woody streamside vegetation. This is a map, it's an aerial photograph of the Iola area. And all of those streams, the streams are coded in blue, yellow, orange, or red. And those red areas are those streams that have no woody vegetation on those streams at all.
Does that, does that mean that excess runoff was in those creeks or were you just observed?
This is just a map of those areas where there's no, no streamside forest at all. Streamside buffer, streamside forest is important. Forest, by forest, I don't mean, you know, five hundred feet out. I mean fifteen feet, thirty feet. What this does is it, it's one of the simplest ways to protect water quality and stream health out there. And, and it can be done by any regular old landlord. And...
And sustainably use the money to have that landlord use it?
There are programs available.
And they have money?
There, there are programs with money.
And you've got that information, you love it?
Well, I've got a whole bunch of information for you.
I just wonder if there's no regulation with this vegetation?
No, there's no regulation.
But if, if a landlord was saying some areas, this little creek right from Raleigh.
Right.
Maybe not, maybe it works. But just help to seek the rights. And all of them do that themselves.
You're looking for root berry, that's light, that's paid light, you're looking for trees.
Yep, trees, bushes, those are best. Not carrots, not carrots. That's not so healthy. But, and I'll get to, I'll get into a little bit of, we are concerned about funding a little later, but there is money out there. I'm trying to provide to you what some of the recommendations are and...
One more place that I'd go, would you say you're not doing regulations?
I'm going to, I hope, as you will see, there are a number of things that you as decision-makers can do to protect the water quality and stream health that we have in this watershed. Alright, so streamside buffers, benefits, shade. It's really important to keep mainstreams cold so that trout and other pool water loading fish, streambank stability. Roots are the best thing, pre-root, shrub root are the best thing at holding banks of glass and keeping sediment on the way. Streamside buffers also filter pollutants like sediments, nutrients, metals, pesticides. And they're really key in providing the whole fuel for the entire food world through dropping of leaves in the water. So, streamside buffers are important. They're, they're basically essential to stream health. The second issue that I wanted to talk to you about is sedimentation. Everybody has seen streams run red or brown after storm events. Well, that's, that's suspended sediment that's coming through the water. This mud can also lay on and stain its silt lays down in the bed itself and can smother fish and other stream life habitats. And is responsible for doing things like fill my gamery. So this is a really, this is, this is the number one stressor across the state for stream systems is excess sediment. And excess sediment comes from a number of key places in the Franklin Fontana watershed. One is the road extreme lakes. Another is disturbed land that's left bare, landslides, and eroding roads and driveways. The third issue I wanted to talk to you about is, is stormwater runoff. This is Crawford Branch here, which drains a large part of Franklin. Crawford Branch is going to go onto a list of the tarred waters next year. Because biological communities in that stream are unable to survive in a healthy way. Why is that? It's because when rain falls on the ground, there's so much impervious cover like roads, roots, driveways, that is unable to absorb the rainwater. And instead, that rainwater runs, hits that pavement, and runs right into a storm drain and directly into a stream like Crawford Branch here. And as force of this water basically scours out habitats, scours out biological organisms, and also brings with it all the pollutants that are, that are on those parking lots and roads. That's just a key issue that urban communities, even small towns like Franklin, have to deal with. So the plan that we developed had a number of recommendations. There are thirty-six recommendations to address problems that we've isolated, but also protect the assets of the watershed, these really healthy streams and forests in the watershed. And you have a copy of this table and that five-page summary. This is a thirty-six, this is, consists of thirty-six recommendations. We grouped them into four types, conservation projects, which are basically prioritized projects that could be on-the-ground restoration projects. Second is policy institutional measures that for you guys as decision-makers come up. The third are educational activities. Children and adults become more informed citizens and be able to be better stewards of the watershed. And then finally, research and assessment activities are those things that we need to, questions we still have that we would follow up on. Briefly, conservation projects, those on-the-ground projects. All those projects are volun, all the projects that we identify are voluntary. And there are specific screenings and chunks of land that are prioritized for restoration or protection activities. And they include stream and streamside buffer restoration, agricultural best management practices, stormwater best management practices in the town of Franklin, farmland protection, and forest and plant protection. This is a map of all the stormwater best management practices that, that we have suggested for the town of Franklin. There are forty of them. And we've developed ideas, we've looked at analyzing the drainage area and developed ideas what the best option for best management practices could be. And there are specific projects such as these for Franklin High School, which would basically treat and slow down and allow stormwater to instead infiltrate into the groundwater instead of directly into the stream. We have a really great set of ideas for educational activities, including an environmental education program. And this is, some of the elements of this are already being undertaken by Little Tennessee Watershed Association. There are efforts by a number of different cooperators, nonprofits, and state and local government organizations on sedimentation and erosion control. Trying to focus on better training, more to produce river-friendly contractors, and to collaborate with adjacent counties so that contractors don't have to adhere to certain rules and trainings in one county and go to another county and have to do something different. So have something that's, that's easier for contractors across the, across county lines in western counties. So, you as decision-makers have the great challenge of trying to embrace economic development in Macon County, but at the same time, trying to protect these rich natural resources that people come here, come here to enjoy, such as Little Tennessee River. We have recommendations for you to consider in this plan. The first is to modify the sediment and erosion control ordinance to better define protect streamside buffers. That language has already been developed by the Watershed Advisory Council. And this, this would be a good step in the direction as far as ordinances, regulations go, protect streamside buffers. The second is to implement a steep slope ordinance. And the third is to develop stormwater ordinance. Those are the three regulatory suggestions we have for you.
How would steep slope ordinance do it?
How would it do it? Well, we'll sit down, write down, down the line. This is a picture of Redmond Mountain, this is a development in Asheville that had, that was very controversial in Asheville. Steep slope ordinance, I consider, and a lot of us in water quality protection, consider preventative maintenance. It's a lot easier to prevent a problem than to hit it down the line. It's a lot easier to keep sediment out of the stream than to, to help a stream recover from a whole bunch of sediment that's come in, into the system. And in fact, sometimes it's not, it's not even possible for a stream to come from some impacts. Steep slope ordinance that we suggest, we suggest there be a number of criteria we can... Specify cut and fill. Require setbacks from screenings. Pay special attention to sites in designated areas of stability index map or down slope, slope hazard map. And the Macon County landslide hazard map is online, is online and available at the North Carolina Geological Survey site. And that is in the plan, that one is in the plan if you want to see it. And then specify road building and maintenance stadiums. They're already developed, have already been developed by Consortium of folks who create the Natural Resource Conservation Service. A lot of this work has already been done by your steep slope strategy subcommittee. And it, we feel that this would just be really good preventative medicine to protect your streams. A stormwater ordinance is also good preventative medicine. And as you saw, Crawford Branch is going to be on the state of paired list. And, and you can control some of that impact from stormwater, stormwater volume and stormwater fluid by doing simple things like providing slope specifications for minimum lot surprises. Make sure that folks minimize site disturbance, minimize the amount of vegetative cover that they remove. Minimize impervious cover on site. And encourage keeping stormwater on site by minimizing or incentivizing the lack of curbing dust. Controlling stormwater through bio-retention areas. And there are a lot of things that can be done with site development to minimize the impacts of stormwater. So, question you all asked, which was a really good question, is, you know, where is the money? There is money out there. There's less money out there than there was four years ago. But there is money out there and through planning efforts such as these, grants and requests for money are prioritized if they come through a planning effort like this collaborative planning effort. This picture here is a picture of a stormwater wetland being built in the town of Holor. And there was a similar watershed plan developed for that area. And it has garnered a number of different grants. This stormwater wetland was built with three hundred thousand dollars granted by the Clean Water Management Trust Fund because it was a recommendation of the plan. So there, there are definitely, there's money out there, there's less money out there. But because this plan is published and has been developed by a collaborative, through a collaborative effort, this is, this makes, these projects through this planning effort are more competitive for those funds. There's been that local advisory committee, we're going to have a portion of those folks look at this plan and try to implement some of the recommendations starting in here. So with that, are there any questions?
Miss Lacy, what's this?
What now?
What, what's this? Is this carefully put out there for you?
It's a report for your benefit. And what's happening now is we're going to sit down as an implementation team and try to look at some of those recommendations that were made and prioritize those that we're going to try to implement. And a lot of the education considerations are going to be, are going to be top priorities.
And you work with the Soil and Water Conservation folks in there? If I'm getting it right, Mike and Johnson? Because I know they've been very active in the redevelopment of Green Banks.
Yes, they have, and they were, they were...
That's why I know they'll trouble mine a lot, too. If we lose your water, we lose that?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll take a recess.
Chairman, I'd like to... The, we don't have any, uh, positions or nothing to do it. The, 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 uh, 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 the, uh,[1136.16]